All right, we're going to call to order tonight's regular city commission meeting for June 20th, 2022. Tabitha, can you give us a roll call, please?
Mayor Young.
Here.
Commissioner Tetrick.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Leachlin.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Tonight for invocation, we have Pastor Mark Somerville with Family Worship Center.
Short break. Our gracious Father, again tonight, we come to you asking for your wisdom, for your guidance and direction in our city commission meeting. We thank you for our city commissioners and as they serve our community. We pray that you'll guide them this evening in our decisions. Continue to keep your hand of protection upon our city. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Somerville. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we've got proclamations and recognitions. We have Katie Miller from the Kansas Municipal Utilities. She's going to present something to our public works, or Public Utilities Director, Jason Patty. Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, thank you for having me. My name is Katie Miller with Kansas Municipal Utilities. For those of you who may not be familiar with who KMU is, we are housed out of McPherson, and our sole mission in life is to provide support to all publicly owned utilities across the state. So water, wastewater, gas, electric, stormwater, and telecom. City of El Dorado is a member of our organization, which we do appreciate that. But we do a lot of things to help and support utility operators. My role for as Director of Water Services is simply to support water and wastewater operations, everything from the technical side up through administration and management. But one of the really important things that we were able to do this year at our KMU annual conference was reinstitute an award program. Unlike a lot of, well, I shouldn't say that, we didn't want to give awards just to give awards. It's very important to us that we have specific individuals who are overly deserving of awards because of not only their dedication to their day job, but for giving back to the utility industry across the state and nationally. And fortunately, one of those awards was to one of your employees tonight. And so, really quickly, I just want to mention a couple of the programs that I work with, and then I'll explain why this pertains to this particular award. One of the things that I administer is called an operator and training program. So a lot of smaller communities, when you have a certified operator on the water or the wastewater side, if that individual leaves, by law, you have to have a certified individual. And so, we will actually send in mentors that go in and help a new individual who knows nothing about the utility industry and help them on day-to-day operations to not only cover that certification regulation, but also to help them grow professionally in the job. I rely on seasoned industry professionals from across the state to step up and act as those mentors. Jason Patty is one of those mentors. So he works in that program, helping calling on people on his own time as those needs come in, brand-new people that just need someone to call and ask questions to. The other big key thing that we do at KMU is additional training for their continuing education certification requirements that operators have to go through. So again, I need seasoned industry professionals to talk about wastewater treatment processes, water treatment processes. I can facilitate it, but I'm not a certified operator. So I marry those, again, seasoned industry professionals with providing this information out to others in the state. Jason is a guest speaker of ours. So, why do I say that? Because not only those things that helped me out in my day job every single day in supporting operations across the state, Jason is a big deal to helping me personally. But I also wanted to share some other comments with you that we also shared at the KMU conference in April when he received this award in front of a few hundred of his peers from across the state. Obviously, this information was written for people not simply from the city of El Dorado, so please, please bear with me as I read some of these comments. But Jason is the Director of Public Utilities for the City of El Dorado. He's a Class IV Water and Wastewater Operator, as well as a Class IV ABC Wastewater Lab Analyst and Collection System Technologist, in addition to a Class II Distribution System Technologist. That sounds like a lot, and I will tell you that that is very rare, that one individual holds that many certifications across the state. Jason is the past recipient of several different industry awards. I'm not going to go clear through his resume, because you guys certainly are aware of that more than I am. But prior to becoming the Director, Jason obviously was a superintendent here, so knee-deep in operations, which makes him the perfect individual to help other operators who are finding their way across the state. Jason was the youngest person ever to receive the Hatfield Award from the State of Kansas Water Environment Association. That speaks simply to his knowledge, to his ability to help other people, and that was shortly after becoming involved in KWEA. Jason has a litany of awards, and it's clear why. Jason has an attitude toward helping people that sets him apart. He's constantly called on by operators, and I don't know how much of you know this, but operators across the state know him. He's a nice guy. He answers the call. He'll answer questions just to help people out in a time of need. He is always there to answer the phone when someone is having difficulty. People call him all the time, and he unselfishly drops everything because he lives the team concept, not only within his own utility, but in the utility industry across the state. Jason is, he's just a leader. He's a leader. We've seen him grow professionally in his, in his track here, but also in the state. Jason has also been recognized and participated in things nationally on behalf of the State of Kansas, which we completely appreciate. He's, he has, well, I left my other page, so we're going to go off of this. But Jason is a person that will put the industry first and foremost before his own needs. He is very quick to say yes if he can. He's very quick to help any individual that is in need of help. I just want you to know that out of 900 different utilities that we support across the state of Kansas, we, we looked at many, many different individuals and hands down, across his peers, that were also sitting at the table making this selection, Jason is the person that was chosen to be recognized. So KMU was very excited and very honored to present Jason with the Wastewater Operator of the Year at the 2022 Annual Conference in Wichita. We wanted the opportunity to reshare this honor with you on his own home turf. And so, Jason, if you would come up, I'd just like to re-present this to him. Thank you guys very much for having me this evening, but I just wanted to share how much Jason not only means to us at KMU, but also to so many others in the industry that he has, that he has touched. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tabitha's going to take a picture of you there, so.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you now.
Jason, congratulations.
Thank you.
Personal appearances are next. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the city commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. It looks like we have a personal appearance scheduled tonight from Phil Benedict with the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I thought I'd take my half-year update to let you know what we've done the first half of the year and what's coming up the second half of the year, just to keep you all up to date. Again, Chamber Mission Statement is to develop and enhance the economic vitality of businesses through community leadership, education, advocacy, and relationship development. Our accomplishments so far this year, we began the year with developing our strategic plan. We hadn't had that in quite a long time. And of course, we've begun promoting an innovative and collaborative mindset to our staff, to our board, to our volunteers. And that's carried over into building relationships with our community partners, as well as Butler County Chamber Executives, the other chambers in Butler County, along with the Chamber of Commerce Executives of Kansas. And we continue to work hard to develop the relationships with our members, the city, and our county officials. Our new investment and benefit structure for the Chamber membership seems to be working well. Some members have dropped because of corporate pressures to save money, but we have also been able to clean up a lot of duplicate accounts that we had, and I also got rid of anybody that hadn't paid, or was late paying, paying over 120 days. And with that, we've reduced our receivables, aged receivables dramatically in the first half of the year. They're, they're way down, and we, we tend to see people in the 30 to 60 days, but, but very few go, go past that. Since I started in August last year, we've added 18 new businesses to the Chamber membership, and we're processing our fourth and our fifth E-Community Loan application, and we've even got two more in the hopper. So, we're hoping to expand this capability to non-members and Butler County businesses as a whole in the coming, coming months. And this expansion will be in concert with Network Kansas and Grow Kansas to develop loan applications specifically for women and minority-owned businesses, entrepreneurs, and rural business ownership. This is a dashboard of our E-Community Loan to date. Since 2016, we've loaned $430,000. And you can see that with El Dorado, we've got 30% that are paid in full, 70% are still being paid, but nobody is behind and nobody has defaulted on their loans in El Dorado. That does happen in statewide program, but here, it doesn't. We've got a nice balance between male and female ownership businesses that have taken the E-Community Loan, but as you can see, we also got some work to do to help create a more diverse market for our E-Community Loans. We had a great annual dinner called the Compass Dinner and the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. We provided the signage grant to Bruco, Misfit Kitchen, and Trunk to Treasures. And we have a few more applications on their way, and I would certainly encourage the Commissioners to reevaluate the funding of the signage grant. This program really has made a difference in some member businesses and the public perception of those businesses. We performed a number of ribbon cuttings, people like Trunk to Treasures, Sugar Sheens on the Greens, Amber Waves Die Studio, Collision Center of El Dorado, El Dorado Feed and Supply, Sluggers, and this Friday, we'll be doing the Union Tank Car Company. And of course, we hope to be doing several more of those. We held a legislative coffee with Will Carpenter and Mike Fag that was well-attended. We've been working with Inc. to expand Location One capabilities to include office space and buildings in El Dorado that are for lease or purchase and just are empty. This will help us attract those looking to develop satellite offices and gain access to a new market. It's going to ease the search for entrepreneurs and for new businesses to come to El Dorado if they have this resource. We expanded our business resource pages on the website to support entrepreneurs and veterans. I'm very happy to tell you, we've developed the annual Chamber Scholarship Fund through the Central Kansas Community Foundation for USD 490 and for 375, and we will nominate one person, a committee will nominate one person from each school to receive a $1,000 scholarship next spring from the Chamber. We had a successful career expo in April. Our Chamber chats, chats are going very well, and we had our very first coffee with the mayor. And the room was packed, and it went very, very well. And as I said into this morning's, Monday Morning News, the mayor was freaking awesome. We held one groundbreaking ceremony at the Oyo Museum. Sure would like to hold more of those. We re-engaged our volunteer committees, the ambassadors, the best committee, women in business, the Celebration of Freedom, and the Community Development and Legislative Committee. Our Hometown Pride Program on Channel 12 was completed in March, and we've elected not to go forward with that anymore. So the rest of this year, we're going to be looking to develop a formal online business training program for members, members, employees through the methods of 100 coaches. This will allow employees who can't afford, or companies who can't afford formal training for some of their employees, to go through this online program, video program, take tests, and, and to be graded through this methods of 100 coaches. It's, it's a marvelous program, but we'll do that with them and provide it for them. We're going to be developing the Youth Entrepreneur Challenge at both high schools later on this year. Startup El Dorado, as we call it, is a program for attracting and supporting entrepreneurs in El Dorado in concert with Network Kansas and, and the Small Business Association. And we're going to start Chamber Uptown for businesses outside the downtown district, focusing on businesses on East and West Central, Sixth Street, North and South Main, beyond, beyond what's currently the downtown district, to better understand their needs from a Chamber perspective. We'll be partnering with the Butler County Farm Bureau on election forums. It's election time, so we'll be announcing some dates here coming up for both state and county elections. The expansion of our E-Community relationship with Network Kansas is, is there to say, we only can do it in El Dorado and Augusta today, the two chambers. Many counties can only have one. We happen to have two because of the size of our county. But I asked Network Kansas, can I support other communities in Butler County with this program if we have the money available? And they absolutely agreed we should. I can charge a small fee for that, increase income for the Chamber for our non-dues membership. So it, it's a no-brainer for me anyway to, to go through this process with other communities in Butler County that don't currently have this capability. The .31 marathon, or whatever that distance is going to be, is still in the planning stages to support our police and fire foundations. It's going to happen this year, or by late next year for sure, but trying to find that base to have the thing and to start walking around an area with our T-shirts on and, and have a few beers and, and sell the T-shirts for, and some silent auction stuff to help support the Police and Fire Foundations. The Chamber Member Appreciation is on July 8th, tailgate party at the Walnuts game. And the ambassadors are evaluating how they will participate in the City of Gold Fest, and I keep hearing mud volleyball. So we'll see how that comes about. I'm also in the middle of evaluating Blue Cross Blue Shield for Chambers program to help our small businesses and employee, with their employee incentives. We still see a lot of for hire signs. Is there a way for them to maintain employees longer if they have benefits? This seems to be a cost-effective way. Other communities, other chambers do it as well, so I'm evaluating that and what that might mean for, for our members. We're reevaluating our senior ambassadors program. Didn't even know anything about it when I took this job, but they keep asking me about it. And so, I've gone to the senior center, asked them about what, what that means to seniors, to support their community through the Chamber. And so, we're reevaluating that program. We'll have our back-to-school breakfast in August, and the Reeve Festival in December, which will be the cost to get in, two reeves for Reeve's Across America. And if a couple comes, obviously, we get the third one for free. But we'll also have people decorate reeves and form a competition and auction them off, still all for, for Reeve's Across America. And we'll have people, people bring their old decorations, unused but still good decorations to that event. And the following morning, we're going to be preparing them to distribute to those who can't afford Christmas decorations. So it'll be a little bit of that kind of a thing on Saturday morning. Going to be evaluating the development of an ag committee for the Chamber. Don't know if we need one, but we have a lot of members who are in that industry, so would it make sense for us to do that? And finally, my goal for the second half is to hire an administrative assistant for the Chamber. I'm dead tired doing two jobs, I got to tell you. And I'm very happy to announce Paige McDaniel will start tomorrow morning as our new administrative assistant. So, that's the tradition. We're open for business here in El Dorado. We want to continue to spread that word, and thank you for letting me share what we've done and what we're doing.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Yep.
And I did enjoy a coffee with the mayor.
You were for your business.
I did my best. So that's it for personal appearances. Public comments, persons who wish to address the city commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the city commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. If anybody here would like to make public comment. Seeing the thoroughness, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For tonight's consent agenda, we'll consider the approval of city commission minutes from June 6th, 2022, city commission work session from May 11th, 2022, and June 1st, 2022. Approval of appropriation ordinance 05-22 in the amount of $1,096,214.45, and the approval of resolution number 2941 for a temporary liquor permit for the Gold Fest on September 24th, 2022. Drive a motion to approve.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We don't have anything on old business, so we'll move right into new business. And agenda item number 12 is the downtown underground electric project.
City Commission, as you know, the city authorized, the city, the city commission authorized participation in this project on August 2nd of last year. $380,000 was allocated from various city sources for the implementation of this project. In addition to that, the city was responsible for acquiring easements that were necessary during construction, September construction easements, as well as permanent easements necessary for the location of the underground infrastructure. So we started negotiating with property owners, following a meeting and some guidance from the commission as to what that would look like. And since that time, we've run into some obstacles, and we need to come back to the commission to ascertain direction on whether the commission desires to move forward, in which case, the city would ask that we solicit probably an independent appraiser to appraise the properties, and then also allocating some additional dollars so we can purchase those easements. Or if the commission desires not to proceed, then the commission would take affirmative action in that direction, because presently, we are committed to doing that project. So because the commission are devoted to participate in the project, we would need the commission to vote affirmatively to disengage with the project announced as the time of the city commission. So with that, I will stand for any questions or need.
So, do we have any conversation, discussion up here?
Do you want us to start?
Dive in.
This whole thing has been not at all what Evergy said it was going to be. When we have first agreed to the $380,000, there was no mention at the time of having to pay for easements. There was time involved in getting the design from Evergy for Scott to look at. For a corporation that wanted to get this done and get it done quickly and pressured the city to move ahead with it right now because they wanted to start it in January of 2022, as you can tell, it is now July, almost July of 2022. They wanted the city to do, purchase the easements, and then they came back and said, well, those easements aren't big enough. We want bigger easements. We were already losing parking spaces on the first round of easements, and we were going to lose additional parking spaces with the increased amount of the easements. And oh, by the way, we need you to get us a staging area where we can put all our equipment to get this thing going. Evergy kept changing the game as we went along. We would do what they asked, they'd change the game. We'd try to do what they asked, and they'd change the game again. I am having, and, and I was all for this. I voted yes in August. I was all for this. I think it would be fantastic. But we are to the point now where some people have been willing to accept the dollar amount the city offered for easements. We have others who have asked for appraisals on the value of their land, which is obviously more than the amount the city is able to offer for these easements. And we even have a few businesses who have said, no way, not going to happen, not my land. I'm having trouble continuing on with the project. I don't think Evergy has been upfront with us. I don't think they have conducted themselves the way a corporation should conduct themselves with the city government. We may be a small city. We may be a small government, but we deserve just as much respect as the big cities do. And I do not feel like Evergy is as excited about this as we were in August. And I have to admit, their actions are making us less and less and less enthused. So I'm having trouble continuing on.
I got a question for Scott. If we choose not to go underground, they're still going to go above ground and replace all the poles and do everything above ground. So they'll still get an upgrade downtown. They just won't get it underground.
I think that would be their decision to make as a utility. I believe when they first approached you, they said they needed to make an upgrade, and it was going to be above ground. Would your city be willing to participate in it? Cost if it went underground?
So it would, it would still be the same if it went above ground?
That's fine.
Right? The connections of the buildings and everything like it was going to be if they went underground?
We barely even discussed the, the above ground. I mean, it was talked about a little bit amongst staff in Evergy, that they needed to do an update on their system.
So I would say at the August meeting, when we, when we had this conversation with Evergy in the beginning, when they were here, they, they clearly made the comment then that, you know, the project's going to be done. This is an opportunity to underground it because they've got to upgrade the service down there anyway. I mean, that was the driver behind it, behind us having that initial conversation, so.
But I'm just saying, there's no guarantee or
Sure.
MOU between us and them or anything, that when that's going to happen, if that happens.
I, I agree with everything that Kendra said. I mean, honestly, pretty much everything we've discussed, you know, we gave Scott and staff a dollar amount. We couldn't meet the dollar amount, and, and we, we also discussed eminent domain was not, not an option, I think, that, that anybody wants to explore. Without those easements, the project can't complete as it is, I mean, I think is a fair way to say that. So, you know, I have a hard time moving forward as well. I mean, it seems like they have moved the goalpost every time we've accommodated them. And, you know, that's not how this is supposed to work.
Leon, do you have some thoughts?
I'm kind of with Kendra right now because of the way everything's going and the way they've done things.
Well, I have to admit, I'm adherent to different opinions, especially from people who say that they're going out and visiting with downtown. If we can do that, I wouldn't mind hearing from Steve or Emily to talk about what they're hearing from the people of downtown, if that's acceptable.
It's up to you guys as a commission. If, if the majority of the commission wants to hear, I would like to, you know, if there's a representative from Main Street that wants to give us some information, then that, then that'd be fine. I'm, I'm fine with that. You guys have a representative, you want to talk to us?
Thank you, Phil. Appreciate it. I kind of feel like the people downtown that I've been talking to feel blindsided by this. The, the first thing we heard about it was last Friday. The last thing we heard about it was when you guys had a public meeting, and you discussed these easements in that public meeting.
these easements in that public meeting and the people that had concerns were all assured that their concerns could be met. I know of one person who talked to Scott and Scott asked that she text him her questions that she still had. She has not heard back from the city at all. Like I said, I feel a little blindsided. We don't know how many dollars you're talking about. We don't know who you've talked to, but everybody we've talked to downtown is still in favor of the project and they would like to see it happen. Now, that doesn't mean that everybody's satisfied with what they've been offered. But, you know, it's a little unfair when we don't know whether the size of the problems, $10 or $10 million that we're talking about, that the city's going to come up with. And, you know, it's, you guys every day look at things that you do eminent domain on. It's a process that's there for you to do for a project you think's important for the community. We think this is important to the community. Definitely needs upgraded and there is no guarantee that they're going to upgrade it. But there is a guarantee if they do, and if they do it overhead, there are several people, especially Nathan at 142, who spent a lot of money on that building. You've helped him get two grants and he needs his undergrounded. His project will not work without undergrounding. So how can you come to us the way this letter says that, I just saw it today, it's in your agenda information, and it kind of says there's a lot of people against this. We couldn't find them. We have some people that have questions, yes, but I really don't think that it, in all fairness, you can do this and kill this project that we've been working on for a year, that many people think's important. You know, the downtown people, they collect a lot of your sales tax. We all pay three times what a residential person pays, you know that. We're taxed at 30% instead of 10%. And so there's a lot of money generated down there that you use for other projects. I have a feeling, and I'm sorry to say this, that you'd rather use this 380 for something else than downtown. And I'm not very happy about that. I feel like you need to give us a chance to know what the size of the problem is, David. Who is?
Don't talk, you're addressing us, Steve. Address us, don't address.
Okay. Well, David's the one that wrote the letter and he's the one.
He's following our directions.
But he is apparently negotiating with his people. Did you read this? It says, "Several property owners desire significantly more compensation. We can find three or four that have questions. Other property owners did not seem amenable to an agreement at any cost." We haven't found any of those. Who are they?
Steve, I'm, look, those are independent real estate negotiations. I had no point. What I asked or what I advised the commission to say, you know what, let's call out all the property owners.
So what you're going to do then, Bill, is you're going to kill the project without the Main Street having an opportunity to work this out in any fashion.
This has been, this project was approved almost a year ago.
But the last time we had a meeting, you had a public meeting and you assured everybody at that public meeting that everything had been worked out. We had McVeigh ask the question. We had Caitlin at Deli Delli ask the question about it right away. You know, there's, some of them are still waiting for answers and they would like to understand more before this commission writes something off that we were told was all done. We talked to West, or Evergy, which I spent 15 years with Kansas Bar and Light Company, which is a predecessor of Evergy. I was in a management position. There are things you can do. Scott knows, we can renegotiate where the right of way is. We can move it to something that's not quite as bad or there's things that can be done without throwing this whole project out the window. And I'm sorry, but I feel like that's just a way for you guys to take that 380 that you didn't want to do in the first place. But your downtown deserves more consideration than this.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything, Leon, that you want to say?
I have to admit, I was in this from the very start. I'm totally disappointed with the way that Evergy's done with that. I still don't know though, without, I'd kind of like to know too, where we're at in terms of the final cost of what it was going to be. But we gave a level and I'm assuming it's beyond that level. I don't know what to say other than that.
Okay. A few things that I'd like to say. The goalposts have moved constantly since we started this project with Evergy. I set up here a year, almost a year ago, when we talked about this in support of the project. It was a split vote of two to three, three to two, sorry, in favor of moving forward this project. And I've been supportive of it since then as well. The challenges that I have with this, some of which Kendra, some of which have been expressed up here, is that when Evergy came to us originally, the conversation was about And a minimal loss, they showed some conceptual, some ideas of what potential loss of some parking might be. We approved that to move forward at that point. Then we were asked to acquire easements in addition to that. And so we recessed into executive session to have the conversation about acquiring real estate because that's covered under executive session, Kansas Open meanings laws. Because if I were to sit up here and say, David, we're going to give you $100,000 to go out and acquire some easements, it takes away his ability to negotiate. So the first person he goes to, you can ask for however they much, however much they want. And unfortunately, the last person they go to is left holding the bag. That's the reason that we go into executive session and that's the reason that I'm not inclined at all to tell you who said yes, who said no.
I understand.
And that's, you had your chance, Steve. Now we're addressing this. That's the reason that we asked David and staff to approach this the way that we did. Staff then contacted businesses downtown and went through the process. There are, and I don't know if we're going to define several or not, there are multiple businesses that they desired significantly more money for the easement than they were offered by the city. And there are also multiple businesses that have no desire to relinquish any of their property. We do talk about condemnation up here when we talk about blighted properties. It's been a long time, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but it's been a long time since we've had conversation about condemnation for an easement, especially for a project like this. It's, I think, an easement says we talk about roads and things like that or have always been a little bit different. This is a, this project is not without merit. I too have had conversations with Nathan in District 142. He and I spent quite a bit of time talking about it today. I think that whether the project is undergrounded or not, there's opportunities for him to continue with this project. That's what he told me today as the developer down there. So my concerns are that we are in a position where we're asked to sink more and more money into this. We've pulled money out of our economic development sales tax fund, which made sense. We've pulled money out of the general fund for this project. We've pulled money out of the major street fund, out of the water fund and out of the sewer fund to fund this at $380,000. When we went into executive session, we gave David the amount to negotiate with and we pulled that additional money out of the general fund. Contrary to what was said, there's not any plans on this commission that I know of amongst the commission right now to take this $380,000 and turn around and spend it on something different. So while I'm a big believer in property rights, which is one of the reasons why I've advocated up here pretty heavily to not move towards condemnation on these types of projects, you know, there's also a part of me that thinks as we approach this and Emily Canal with Main Street and I had this conversation the other day, that if there's landowner, if the business owners were so inclined to move forward with this project and it was that much of a benefit to them, then we shouldn't have that big of a problem acquiring the land. At this point, we're saying we're going to spend taxpayer dollars, some of which is generated in our downtown and some of which is generated throughout the rest of the city. We're going to spend taxpayer dollars to underground the electric downtown and benefit your businesses. And by the way, we're also going to pay you for the privilege of doing that because we're going to take away parking space. And those are the things that I have challenges with. And this has been, you know, city staff has been working through this. I've talked to business owners downtown, numerous business owners downtown. I've talked to business owners that were indifferent. Yeah, sure, it'd be great, but they're indifferent about it. I've talked to business owners that are opposed to giving away any of, or selling any of their property or giving up a parking space that they use. And I've talked to business owners that are fully supportive of it. So, you know, I think that there's, that makes sure, I think the report that's provided to us in our packet explains the process that staff went through to, you know, to try and facilitate this and to try to carry out our direction as a commission that we gave to David. And so, you know, those were my concerns about this. Yes, Kendra?
I understand why you're upset with the city. But I think the initial upset should be with Evergy. Evergy has not followed through really on anything they said was going to happen. They keep, like Kelly said, they keep moving the goalpost on us. We are not working with a corporation who has our best interest in mind. I guess I'm tired of being lied to by Evergy. Steve?
Are you aware how much sales tax Evergy paid?
Steve? You've got to come up.
Are you aware how much franchise tax the Evergy pays to the city of Evergreen? You have that number?
Does that, that doesn't matter? That doesn't make it okay to?
They're contributing and they really have asked for help. Every project that you do engineering wise has changes, doesn't it, Scott? You have things come up that you don't foresee and this is what we're dealing with. I don't think they've been that unreasonable and the problem I have with it is that, you know, tell us what that difference is. I mean, don't tell us, tell us how much money. Do we need to come up with $10,000 downtown? Maybe we do a special benefit district. I mean, what is the size of the problem? Surely you owe us telling us that, Bill. Don't you?
Are you willing to do a benefit district downtown?
I don't know. I'm not going to have a chance, am I? And how big is the problem? If it's $100,000, that's one thing. But if it's 10, maybe we find a way to come up with it. I'll go take my hat, go up and down the street, but you've given me no choice but to do it now.
Leon, you want to table this for 45 days and come back with a benefit district for downtown?
Can you do it that quick, Phil?
Well, you need, like, there are several ways to get it. I think the minimum standard is that you have, you raise it and have to have 50% of the community landowners. Is that right?
Well, first of all, it's very difficult to set a benefit district when you don't know the cost. So part of the challenge is, to answer Steve's question about the cost, we don't know what it's going to take, to be honest, because we were given a limit and we tried to communicate that to property owners and in some respects, they wanted, some property owners wanted more than that and some basically said, we don't want to play both. So we don't know the total dollar amount that will be necessary to acquire easements at this point. We have a ceiling to work with, that's what we work within because we also need, we had a type constraint to keep the commission back on board. So we don't know what that number looks like. If the commission would like to know that number, we're happy to go out and we individually with property owners negotiate what that transaction is going to look like on each and every single property owner and then come back with a dollar amount. But based on the guidance we were provided, that's what we had at that point in time. There's no sense in negotiating what will it take to get this job done for you when we didn't have the authority to negotiate that in the first place. That's where we were at.
We set the price for a reason. I mean, we talked about this for a really long time and my concern is how much is too much money and there's people that aren't willing to negotiate and I would not feel comfortable going the eminent domain route. I know we say it happens, it doesn't happen that often and it definitely doesn't happen down there.
It's a tool you have.
I understand what the tool is. I 100% understand what it is.
And I'm not saying that's the way to do it. I'm just saying, give us a chance, guys. Don't just, don't just cut us off at the knees. We didn't hear about this till Friday. Last thing we heard was when the city had a meeting telling all of us, hey, we got, everything's going to be fine. We had individual questions about right away. I mean, I'd be glad to go help you. I've bought right away many times. I mean, I think Main Street has a vested interest in this and I think it's important and it needs to happen for downtown. So just give us a chance to find a solution and define for us what the problem is. I can't solve a problem, guys, that you don't define. I got to have a definition, how much money we're talking about. And we've had people that I've been told you're having a problem negotiating with, told me, I'll give it to the city. So I just don't know where to start and stop. I'm sorry, guys. I mean, yeah, I'm a little upset because I feel like you've left me no alternative. You know, you're going to make a decision tonight to kill this and for whatever length of time, you know what it is, two or three years, we thought this was a done deal. Evergy told us Friday on the telephone, everything's set, we're ready to go. And then we find out, you know, I mean, David's letter is really the first solid thing we've seen that said what the problem was, but it's very vague. I'm sorry. I.
Thanks, Steve.
I'd be glad to answer any.
I suppose one option would be if the commission wanted to negotiate these easements, perhaps Main Street could do that and then once we have that number, they can bring that back. If the commission wants to spend that amount of money, we can find that money somewhere. If not, then, because the conversations we've had internally have not necessarily been, I mean, I think there's kind of two things going around here. I don't know, quite frankly, which side's true, you know, if he's saying that some people have said that they'd be willing to donate it and these same people have said that they won't, I don't know what to say about that.
Neither do I. I mean, that's the problem.
And Scott's been the one negotiating, so I don't know if you have.
And just like I shared with you all, you know, about the method and the way we're about is, we identified a few obstacles and made you aware of that, that hinder the amount you set. And I shared with you, there are some that are very supportive of this, very much so. Some that want to better understand how it affects their business. Some that are like, no, absolutely not have plans for like this or expansion in mind or what happens. And I also shared with you, we've shared some of that information with Evergy and I've found a workaround on one of those, but there are still obstacles. And by having the ceiling, you know, us and staff need to make you aware there's obstacles. I don't think we can obtain these with the ceiling that we're given, either we need to have some more authority amongst ourselves or make a decision, you know.
I'll give you a staging area for them. I bought Lewis and West Chris Concrete. I've got whatever that is, several acres there. I'll give you a staging area for downtown if that's a holdup on this. I mean, I know they wanted somebody's private property to do that with, okay? I own that property. It's a block from downtown. I mean, I'd be willing to do that just to help in any way. I'd be glad to go out and try to get, you know, the right of ways. I mean, but I can't do it tomorrow and I would want Scott to go with me because I don't know all the ins and outs on this project, but.
You know, simply a project starts up from, we plan it five years out and we start determining these obstacles, planning, surveying, meeting with property owners, come to you with approval of a dollar amount. We know all these answers and this was footlong.
Yeah, we had to approve it then before this project was going to happen and now we're almost a year down the road.
Yeah.
So I can say from the public meeting when we talked about the easements, you know, when Evergy was there, showed the maps of the easements, after that meeting, they loosened it up and the number of easements.
I know, I understand, there have been changes. I understand that. I understand that, but we haven't been aware of it. I mean, we need the opportunity to try to figure this out without just losing.
Let's be honest, let's give them 60 days, and stable this for 60 days, and bring it back in 60 days.
To do, to do what? I mean, what are we going to do for 60 days? What, are they, are we going to have Main Street negotiate with our, with tax dollars for us?
Let them go out there and find out what it's going to cost, and then come back to the city and tell us what it's going to cost to buy those easements.
I think you have to be very cautious with acquiring easement for a municipal entity. I mean, there's lots of laws and rights that property owners have with the use of their, their personal property, their private property, that they are then granting the right of a franchise utility, or the City of El Dorado, to use that property. So, we have to be really cautious in the steps we take.
Well, my son owns a building in downtown. He's not received any paperwork on this. They need an easement from him, that I'm understanding. You don't? Okay, that was what I was told at one point, but, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Do I, do I have a motion of some sort? If you guys want to table this, if you want to kick the can, if you want to move forward with this motion? My, my concern with, with asking someone else to go out and do the negotiations, we have staff that's trained to do that, and they've done that process, they understand the laws behind it, and I'm, I'm not comfortable having somebody else negotiate with or sit tax.
So, when you went out there, Scott, and you talked to the people, and they came up with a price of their land, can you tell us that in executive session, so we know what we need?
Like I shared with you in, in the work session, I have been out with all of them face-to-face, all of them received correspondence, and wanted to make you aware of the roadblocks that, that I have encountered on some of these, even acquiring easements, and we needed to make you all aware of that, and knowing that the ceiling that we were given isn't going to be adequate for some of them.
I guess I don't want Main Street negotiating easements. There's no doubt about that. Is anybody out there a business owner? Do you have any comments to make concerning this?
Sure.
Please come up.
Steve will talk to me after this.
Oh, well, he's not going to talk to me either, so, you know.
My name's Scott Hackler, I live at 357 Northeast Coal Creek Road outside of El Dorado. I own F5 imprint, El Dorado cigar and pipe, Hackler Investments, and El Dorado City Limits. I was approached by Mr. Rickert about this easement situation. I've been vaguely familiar with the process of what was going on with this, let's throw it underground with Evergy plan deal, and just got, like a lot of people in town, just got a little whiff of it, because I'm busy. I don't have time to pay attention to all this little bitty stuff. Since then, I've paid more attention. A little background on myself, as I worked for 22 years, I was a lineman for Cox Communications. I've been on all them poles and every one of them easements, multiple times. And I'll tell you that the first thing that came to mind was, is that every time I've ever walked, and not just because I was a lineman for them, but every single time I've walked out of any business on the Restaurant Row, in the 100 block of, of North Main, or behind my building, in the 100 or 200 block of West Central, never once have I ever stopped at the pole and went, looked up and said, my gosh, that is ugly, and I wish it wasn't in there. The poles are invisible. They're in every easement, in every jurisdiction of every town, in every state. You've taken, approached me, Scott did, about a 15, my numbers might be wrong, but I think it was 15-foot by 155-foot permanent easement for West Star to jackhammer up whatever they needed to, to bore through my parking lot at will, at any time in the future that they needed to, block my entrance for a delivery van to come into my back door at 202 West Central, or whatever else they have need for. I know how easements work, 22 years in the business. And I already have three-phase underground service in my building. I would lose at least two parking spots out of my parking lot, right behind my building, and on Restaurant Row over there, at the 100 block North Main on the west side, it's my understanding that we'll lose the majority of the parking slots right against the restaurants, which is our most populated business district in El Dorado downtown. That's where everybody goes to eat, that's where everybody goes to shop, that they're going to go down there, or the other side where Steve's son has his business, there's some shops on that side. We're going to block off that deal. So, what I did, under advisement from Emily after she made the phone call, and I'm only here because Emily called me, and I think she regrets that phone call now. But, because we're on two different sides of this. Every time I've ever made any decisions, business or personal, I make the pro and con sheet, and I got it right here. On the con sheet, I'll go to the con sheet first, expense to the city. I know you guys have pulled monies out of every kind of phone, street deal. We just had a pool incident, which could have used some general money to get that done, which is enjoyed by everybody down, you know, in the whole town. So, we had that expense. We'll lose our parking, a lot of parking slots down there, in not only my parking lot, which I ran out, by the way. I already had informed Drew Wilson that if forced by not my hand, I'm going to have to figure out where he can park, not, not right behind the building that he owns, that I leased to him. There's no noticeable improvement of aesthetics if we take them poles out. I looked with the, Mr. Mayor was at my place one time, and I drug him outside, and I said, look across the parking lot. Right now, I see five sticks in a row with a bunch of stuff on top that no one looks at. If I take them poles out of this scenery, what do I see? Derelict buildings that need painted or fixed up. It changes nothing. I take and get transformers that are the size of this podium, or thereabouts, and now I've got stuff that I'm going to see every single time I walk out of any one of them businesses. It doesn't change beautification of anything. And it will not make any difference to, to the look of the rear of the buildings on either side of that street. Now, some of them are better than others, but there are some people who just either don't have the funds or wherewithal that they're going to fix up those buildings. And then we lose the lot, the right of our, our land from granting these easements. If I want to build a building on my lot behind my building, because my business is booming, and I want to expand it, now I've got to work around an easement in there, it's 15-foot deep into my lot, and I've got another building that the setbacks might not let me bolt it right to that apartment building right behind it. So, what am I, stuck with a single-car garage back there, that I can't do nothing with now? On the pro side, I had two things, and I struggled to put it down. I just don't understand what we're benefiting out of this, other than a few businesses will get their service made underground, which I thought was their responsibility in the first place. If I'm doing something that's for my building, why wouldn't I have to pay for it? And we'll get a moderate to extreme compensation for the buying of easement, if you own one, that the city would have to acquire. It's not about money, folks. I care less about that. I mean, push comes to show, my figure's going to be very high, but I, like I told Mr. Rickert, no, it doesn't benefit me or anything else that I see around the neighborhood. I spent two years over there in the old building that Wells had, at 111 North Main, and I had three-phase power running all my equipment inside there, without fail, no problem. I have three-phase power at the White Eagle Building right now, no problem. We just don't have any electrical issues. I understand West Star, or Evergy now, wants to upgrade their situation. It ain't no different than if AT&amp;T or Cox Communication wanted to upgrade their equipment. They just wanted to try to figure out a way to skirt a lot of the expenses, push it off on the city. Because it's not just Evergy, folks, they pulled the polls, Cox Communication's going to go in underground, AT&amp;T's going to want to go underground, somehow or another, the citizens are going to pay that, because they're not doing that stuff for free. I worked there for 22 years, I guarantee you, they ain't doing it for free. There ain't a good-natured person in that building I used to work in. So, the only thing I saw that was in common with all that is upgraded power to downtown, and it's my understanding, whatever you want to do it anyway, they have to, because there's aged power system downtown. Put it in there, ain't going to make any difference to me, one way or another. And the only thing I can see that's any, that will benefit anybody is if I had a windfall of, I sold part of my easement, and I got enough money to go on vacation with my mom. I mean, but I lost access to my property, and a big chunk of it, because that's 100, 155-foot by 15-foot is a big chunk of my parking lot, and losing at least two stalls for at least two, possibly three for a transformer bang. Now, I can't leave those spots out. Don't get any compensation more for that, but they're going to put them transformers there if they let them. So, I said no. And I think that I heard that there's a couple more that said no, too. So, that's where I stand on that.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Appreciate it, Scott.
Thanks. Any other business owners want to talk?
I have to admit, Mr. Mayor, what bothers me the most is how many people were saying no. Because the money, like you mentioned, seems to be, you know, who knows what the final amount is. But if we've got enough people that are saying no, I think that stops us from doing it.
My, one of my concerns, you know, we talked about the reliability, you go two blocks in either direction, it's still going to be above ground. The lines that feed the downtown stuff will still be above ground. And, and it comes back to the money. You know, you guys agreed to an amount, we agreed to extend that amount, and we're still not to that number. And we, we, I think most of us have said, we don't want Main Street to negotiate. So, that goes back to Scott spending more time on this, where, I don't know how much he's actually worked on it, but it's been significant, you know, and so, and, and I'm just, you know, that people like Scott that, that don't, I mean, how, how do you do that? Where you get back to where we have to take the land? I just don't think that's what we want to do. And, and you guys tried to work around his property, and I assume that's not possible?
And there, yeah, there were multiple property owners.
Well, yeah, and I, and I've talked to, you know, several people that, that are indifferent, or they don't see an advantage, that are business owners down there. They're just like, you know, if, if it doesn't cost me anything, it sounds great, but if it's going to cost me money, or I have to give up land, what, what are we getting out of that? You know, and that's my problem. I haven't heard a good reason why, you know, like his, his pro list, I don't know anything else that's on that list. And those were, and there seems to be a lot of negatives right now.
Do we have a motion from somebody to move in one direction or another, which will then?
I guess my question would be, if, if I were to make a motion to table this for 30 days, what is it we would expect to happen in 30 days?
I think you, you direct staff to tell you what means are necessary to achieve.
Well, that's something.
Well, I, I think you have to also add on to that, then, is if we have some various things, like you're saying with Scott, if there's no workaround, I think we'd also need to hear, how many of those no workarounds have you got? I mean, is this, is it, is it one? Is it five? Is it 10? I don't care about the address, but if it's something we can't work around, and you reach a certain point in there, then that's what you need to know, to me. I'm more concerned about the no workaround.
It was more about the dollar amount.
Okay. Then that's an issue, I think, that maybe we could come back with.
Can we get the stuff moved off of Hackler's land there, where he doesn't lose his?
Evergy and I have discussed that, and it made it very difficult, and not to point Mr. Hackler's property out at all. But.
Yeah.
That's ingress or egress, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
He said, he said that it made it very difficult, and I said, because that, that's directional ingress or egress for the.
Yeah, right there for that road.
At, at some point, I mean, tomorrow, like I shared, we have a walkthrough with Evergy of the project, you know.
And hopefully, they won't change their mind on something.
Well, I mean, and not, I think they're, they're pretty fine, and they're wanting it, they're going to want an answer to, and they procure a lot of the equipment upon, from what I understand.
Scott, I understand where you're coming from, but with the way they've let us around, they've got to understand that they caused a lot of the problems on this, and I hope you're conveying that to them, that it's hard to work and get something down if you don't know where you, if you don't know the points you're headed to, it's hard to get there.
Yeah, and I think they, they understand that. And, and you, you know, your guys' staff, my department, did all of the survey work for the project, provided that to all the HLE companies. We've spent on it, invested a lot of time in this.
I'm just making a question. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the following motion. I vote that we table this project for 30 days, at which time we hear back from Scott, whether how many of the workarounds, we don't have the ability to come through, and about the additional amount of money that would take us to get this project to go through. If that can't be reached, the project, I feel, should be.
Can I amend his?
How easy? Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking to set a date, the July 18th.
Okay.
City Commission.
Second. Karen, did you get the amended motion in the second?
Sorry.
I'm going to get it from video, it'll be fine.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, traditional discussion on this.
I, I just want to make one thing clear out of this, though. What we're looking at is, if we can't get the workarounds, then, to me, we're not going to be able to do this. That, that's more of an issue to me than the money.
And I think it's kind of difficult at this point, because we talked about, now we're going to go out and say, well, we'll take.
Yeah.
So, that's what.
Yeah, it's not easy, Scott. That's why you make the big vote.
And we agreed to a price, and we've exceeded that price. So, that, that's where I'm at.
I mean, we'll bring back a number, whatever, you know, we come up, whatever Scott comes up with, we'll bring that back and say, property owners will need this to make, to be whole for their easements, and then you guys will decide if that's.
Worthwhile.
Yeah.
So, as a point of discussion, since we're in discussion now, you know, I'm going to agree with Kelly. We, we, we re-recessed into three executive sessions to continue this conversation. We gave staff the limit and the cap for this, at that time with the understanding that, you know, do your best to get within that, and if you don't, then we've, we've done what we could to try to add more money to the project than we originally anticipated. I don't know that there's a, my personal opinion, I don't know that there's a benefit to extending this for 30 days at all. I think that it just, you know, Scott's got to walk through with him tomorrow for this project as it stands, and it's just going to kick the can down the road, 30 days, when we know that we've got property owners that don't want to participate in the project, which is fine, that's, they're, they're a property owner. We have property owners that do, and then we've got property owners that are indifferent. And I, I don't, my personal opinion is, is that in 30 days, that's not going to change. And, and the last thing that I want to see.
Is have another 30.
Is to either add another 30 days on, but honestly, guys, the last thing that I want to see is, we've, you know, we've, we've had business owners, pro and con, we've had property owners, pro and con, in here talking, and I, the last thing that I want to see is the next 30 days of, of property owners on either side of the fence, you know, getting, trying to be convinced, convinced to change their convictions or their minds. But, you know, because, you know, we, we were very clear in not, you know, not, not talking about who said no, or who said yes, or who wanted more money, or who didn't, because, you know, that's not our place to get into the inter, inter-business and interpersonal relationships in, in any part of our town, but especially in our downtown. You know, I, I feel like we, Evergy has continued to move the goalposts throughout this project. I feel like we set the goalposts, and we set the standards, when we sent staff out to do this project. Those goalposts were not able to, those standards weren't able to be met, and now what we're doing is, we're giving 30 days to just, for us to start moving the goalposts, in my opinion. So, we have a second motion, is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, as it was amended and seconded, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion falls, three fails, three zero. Do we have an additional motion? Do we have to take affirmative action on this, one way or another, whatever we do?
One, three. Just give it three, zero.
I meant, I meant two, three, three, two.
That's her.
I'm sorry.
Did you vote yes or no?
I voted yes.
Greg and Lee, I voted yes. Do I have another motion?
I move to discontinue the city's participation in a previously authorized project to underground electric infrastructure within downtown El Dorado, and release such funds necessary for the city's share of the project.
We have a motion, and it's, I'm sorry, Kinder. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this piece, which we've been discussing, but I always welcome more discussion. Frankly, the issue's cooking something I don't like, so.
My only discussion was, this is a painful decision, and I want you all to understand that this. that this is a painful decision.
Can I make one more comment?
No, we've got a motion and a second.
Motion on the table.
Greg, do you have any additional comments to make?
No.
Kelly, Liam. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, three to two. I appreciate the conversation up here, guys, and from the audience. And I appreciate the work the staff has put into trying to make this work over the last almost year. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Annual, gen item number 13, annual equipment reserve and building reserve funded transfers.
City Commissioner, at the end of the, each year, we look at our out balances, and per the city's budget policies, any fund that has a balance in excess of the maximum fund balance requirement, the city staff will come back with a recommendation on how to allocate those funds. So this past year, for 2021, we had several funds that had an excess of a fund balance, or a fund balance in excess of the maximum requirement. And so, in doing so, we looked at that and came up with a couple of recommendations for end of year fund transfers. So this is applicable to the 2021 year, so maybe we'll go on 2021 and affect that fund balance. So, I'll go through these real briefly, and if you have any questions. The general fund at a fund balance at the end of the year of $2,315,000 and $13,000. We are recommending an equipment transfer to the equipment reserve fund of $500,000 and a transfer to a building reserve fund of $100,000. Before I continue, I'll briefly explain those two separate reserve funds. So the equipment reserve fund is a fund that the city uses, an unbudgeted fund that the city uses to purchase vehicles and equipment, so rolling stock. In the general fund, for example, okay, like parked trucks, police cars, sometimes fire vehicles, depending on the size. And then the building reserve fund is a fund that we are going to, it's kind of a new thing, where we're going to be setting aside monies to replace or repair things that may happen on our facilities. So if an air conditioner goes down, we'll have a fund that we can use to replace air conditioners, or if we need to fix a roof leak that's not related to an insurance claim, then we can do that. So it's kind of a fund that we can repair facility things, and we've never really had that before. And so if you get into a jam where you have both air conditioners, and we have many air conditioners that are needing to be replaced at some point in the near future, we want to kind of start getting ahead of that, and we can. So generally, that's how that works. So, the general fund has two funds like that. They have an equipment reserve fund, a building reserve fund, and then the water sewer reserve fund, or refuse fund, and stormwater funds also have their own funds as well.
David, can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
So when you need that money, what do you, do you have to come to us and say, hey, we want to move that money out?
Great question. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
So, first of all, these are reserve funds, and they're unbudgeted, so you don't actually appropriate dollars as part of the annual budget process. So if something were to happen, we need to replace three air conditioning units at $45,000, we have to come to you all to get authorization to do that. Vehicles are the same, unless, I guess all of this is the same, unless it's below $50,000, in which case I got to prove it. If it's above that, then it falls within the policy, and you guys have to worry. Great question. So the water fund, end of the year, with $2,514,480, we're recommending an equipment reserve transfer of $200,000 and a building reserve transfer of $175,000. Sewer fund, $1,273,140, we're recommending a equipment reserve of $200,000 and a building reserve of $100,000. Refuse, $841,855, recommending a equipment reserve of $416,000, building reserve fund of $50,000. Now, on this one, you might say, wow, that's a lot of money we're transferring to the equipment reserve fund. I assure you that that's actually potential. So the way the refuse budget works is we save up over a number of years until we have enough money to buy a new trash truck, and then we spend that down, and then begin to accrue it back up. The change here is that instead of accruing this in the refuse fund, we are going to create this separate equipment reserve fund. And so in essence, it removes it from the fund balance and just puts it into a savings account. Then we can more easily invest and more easily just track and monitor.
So any department can draw on the equipment fund?
No.
No.
So let me make a quick distinction. General fund departments, so that would be like police, fire, parks, public works, engineering, there's probably one or two others I'm missing. Those departments will draw from the general fund, equipment reserve fund. The water department will draw from the water fund, equipment reserve, or building reserve. The sewer fund draws from their sewer center. So the enterprise funds have to draw from their own, which is why we're creating their own separate savings account.
But do you reserve the right to be able to move, like the, and I'm sorry for all these questions, I'm just trying to get a handle on it. Like this, you take the $500,000 and the $100,000, and so there's about $1,600,000 left. Is that correct? So, let's say you've got somebody, another place that has a problem. Are you able to go through and get out of that, like from the general fund, to help the other fund that might have the problem?
No. So what we would do is we would come to you with a recommendation.
Okay.
We make those decisions.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
It's a great question. No, Liam, that's a great question.
Okay.
And the stormwater fund, any balance of $374,467, and so we're recommending an equipment reserve of $100,000, and that's to start saving up for a street sweeper. One of the real catalysts behind all this, not only to track in on that stuff, but as you may know, interest rates are increasing. We are developing a new strategy to invest our funds and take advantage of those rates.
Good job.
And so by doing this, if the water fund invests funds, the water fund will then be, will then receive the benefit of interest from those funds, so we can keep our bank 敞 open.
Good move.
I appreciate it.
So are we ready?
I'm ready for a motion, if you'll.
Okay, so if I'm seeing this right, I move to approve ordinance number 1371, authorizing the creation of building reserve funds for the city of El Dorado, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we do this second, and then go ahead and make the second motion?
Okay, and I move to approve the proposal, proposed fund transfers estimated.
Second.
Couple of motions in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion or questions? And those were good questions, those were all questions I asked first time I.
Okay.
It was awesome. No questions, no discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, five oh. Gen item number 14, purchase authorization for a combination sewer truck. This sounds interesting.
It is, indeed it is. So, the city purchased, put up bids for a new sewer bed truck. The bid came in $318,47, this would be the, this is a water fund for 2022. So a sewer truck, if you're just curious, that's a truck for a, those on it, basically shoot water down the sewer pipes, yes, exactly. And we use it to clean our water, our sewer veins. We can also hook a, do we hook the camera to this one, or is that a different truck?
Come on, come on up. Waste Water Operator of the Year.
Yeah, there you go.
So, yeah, so we've got a lot of great things going for us right now with the sewer camera. Vaporitting is another piece that we're going to be utilizing this truck with. The biggest benefit, or a few benefits, would be redundancy of equipment, so we're not interrupted in service. But then we can also dedicate one or the other trucks to continue to camera sewer lines, to vapor it, clean out our sewer system, while we get emergency calls all the time. By the time we get set up, you know, we can't get things done as efficiently as we should. These trucks also hydro excavate, potholing a lot of our tough-to-reach areas, you know, for water leaks and things like that. So it's not, you know, strictly used for the sewer system, but also has a lot of benefit for the water system as well.
It's like a giant portable, super powerful shop vac.
Exactly. And I think we need to have a contest and a name for it.
Well, so, 10, 10 years ago, we built stadium or so. We ran conduit from the stadium to, over to Butler's campus. And the people who paid to run the conduit did not put a pull line in it. And so now we've got all this conduit that runs all the way over there. And we were working, and somebody at the, I was talking to Buck at the time, but somebody brought here as this big vac truck down there, and went to one end of that conduit and hooked the vac truck on that four-inch conduit, and went to the other end and had a big old ball of string, about a mile of string, and a ball that they just watered a ball of toilet paper up on the end of it, hit the shop vac on the other end, clover campus, and it was there in about two seconds.
Wow.
It was kind of cool.
All I can say is, do not lose the remote.
So this is, this is, yeah, this is technology certainly, and a truck that is necessary. And I tend to call the sewer department out. Often in my, in our neighborhood, sometimes we've got backups, and you guys always kind of do a great job with the equipment that you have, so I'm guessing this is necessary.
So is that just a water force truck, or is it also, can you reverse that and have the vacuum too?
Yeah, so that's the combination side, so we can jet clean lines, and then we can also hydro excavate.
How soon do you get it?
So, I think it's going to have a Christmas bow on it. So surprisingly.
We've got to wait that long.
We've got a build slot, yeah. With the way things are, we feel pretty fortunate.
We still, we'll be making two trash trucks.
At Christmas time, yeah.
Wow.
Well, they're not near as pretty as this.
Don't say that to Brad, and there's, gets this whole turf battle between them.
Probably doesn't have a remote in the trash truck either, so.
Ready for a motion? I am very much ready for it. Thank you, Jay.
I move, thanks, Jason. I move to approve the purchase of a new combination sewer truck from RED Equipment Company LLC in the amount of $318,487, and authorize the city manager to execute any associated paperwork.
A second. Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Final item under new business, commission meeting time change. Commission meeting time change.
It's my understanding that the last meeting that I was going to add, you guys, ordinance to change the meeting times of these meetings from 6:30 to 5:30. We prepared that ordinance for your review and approval. Incidentally, the days will still be the same, so the commission will still meet on the first and third Mondays of the month, barring a holiday, and the championship will meet through Tuesday following.
Do you have a motion?
Well, I move to approve ordinance number 1372, and an ordinance amending Title II, section 2.04.090 of the City of El Dorado, Kansas Municipal Code relating to the scheduling of regular city commission meetings.
Second.
Motion second, is there any discussion? Just wanted to kind of say for the record, we did bring this up at the last regular meeting. Staff brought us information at the work session, we kind of talked about it briefly there. I was the one that brought this up, and the driver for me was really around staff and, you know, requiring staff to stay late on these commission days, and to try to kind of limit that, mitigate that as much as possible. Because I know that David doesn't pay people overtime, at least people in this room, so.
Yeah, I know.
So, the plan was to kind of move it up, so that we can.
Yeah, but you've got to go to the swoon, so for free.
I appreciate, appreciate staff putting this together and getting this to us. This will take effect at the next meeting, or the July.
It will take effect one after one publication in a newspaper, I think, this evening before I leave. And they'll give me an estimated publication date, probably tomorrow morning, so I'll be able to tell you that.
Okay. And we'll get the information posted on the website, and your Facebook updates on that. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It's all for new business, and there's no discussion items, so we're going to move on to city commission and advisory board updates. We're going to start with Commissioner Taffey.
Library Board hasn't met since our last meeting, after David talked about the revenue neutral rate, so I have no updates. We're scheduled for a meeting in early July. I'm not sure, I think there's a holiday, they skipped it, and so we just didn't have a meeting this month.
I don't have anything to report for Ian, but I do got a question for Scott. On that house on summit, is it being, is it moving forward, or is it just?
Well, for meds, we're bold. We haven't seen any awards.
Okay.
And maybe to give the commission a brief update, Phil, a line on the others. The property in the 200 block of North Star, the gentleman came up and talked about, he had plans for a model. He has sold that property. And then, there was one more gentleman, and I forget the address, that came and spoke to you all that evening about his plans. Structure has some difficulties, and he's working to overcome them. But there is progress being made there, we're hopeful people are going to be able to.
So the property that's been sold, what does that do to the process?
We have a, in our property maintenance code, we have, this is, you know, once cited and once condemned, that liability cannot be passed on to a new owner once they're notified. So really, we did have a discussion with the city attorney, and Sarah's been looking into that. McKee has been looking into that as well. So it's just, I was made aware of it last week, but we finally saw the documentation this morning that it occurred.
Liam, Mr. Williams.
We had an interesting meeting. Jaden, it's just interesting to be around, because he's always got something on the ball. We have a lot scheduled. We're going to have a farmer's market on June 26th. It's going to be at North Main Park. Unfortunately, to keep it nice, and PG, I can't talk about the Renaissance Festival being canceled because Wichita stowed our date. Moving on, we have a kids' week scheduled, July the 18th through the 22nd. There's something going on every day of the week there. It's really interesting. We're pretty well closed down on sponsors, but we're still looking for a couple of things. The Gold Fest.
What was that date again?
Excuse me, yeah, I'm going fast.
No, it's fine, 18 through 22.
Yeah, 18 through the 22nd. The farmer's market was the 26th, if I didn't say that.
Coming Sunday.
Uh, yeah. The Gold Fest, moving, a lot of stuff happening there. It's really interesting to hear all the people and the involvement that's coming out from that. Their opening on Saturday, September the 17th, is going to be at Walters Pumpkin Patch. They have really gone overboard for us on all the things they're offering to do. A lot of things happening. The block party that we've got scheduled that goes along with that, is going to be from 2:00 to 10:30 on the schedules. Koots Museum has got a lot of stuff scheduled that's supposed to go, even deals from the 60s for a, what did they call that, Tabitha? A karaoke?
Oh, the Koots thing is a disco party at the end before, and then the karaoke party is at Club Buckville.
Yeah, but there's talking about, for example, having contests for dressing, just, just a lot of really neat stuff, as you look to that. We're always looking for sponsors. They're still looking on the headliner for the concert. Are you aware you can talk about that yet at all?
No, we were supposed to come back on Friday, we did not, and so we reached out today, and hopefully we'll have an answer.
Okay. We're still looking for sponsors. They go anywhere from $500 to $15,000. I want to go along with what Phil said, we hear a deal with the breakfast with the mayor, fantastic. I also took advantage, we had a young lady there from the Gas Resource Company, said she was interested in getting involved in El Dorado, and I said, I got a good deal for you. So I called and I sent an email to Jaden with the, her, all her contact information. I think he's already contacted her.
They have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Good deal. That's it for me.
Disco, awesome.
Yeah, yeah, disco gear, disco.
Kick out the go-go boots and the tie-dye, oh, and the miniskirts.
Yeah, there you go. Got David's interest there.
Parks and Rec was supposed to meet this Wednesday, but Kevin's out of town, so we'll meet on the 29th. And Main Street meets next Tuesday. They probably won't want me there.
Oh, fool.
I'll go anyway.
You're there, that's on the bridge.
Well, the good news is, there's lots of other things that we partner with in this region.
I have a question I'd like to ask, though. When somebody tells you they've got a problem that there's blighted property, what is our proper response on who they need to talk to?
They need to talk to the engineer department.
Okay. Is that basically through Scott's office, you say, call the engineer?
Yeah, just call Amanda, and then, and then Amanda can, if it's a tall grass or whatever, she can.
Okay, okay, thank you, sorry.
So I don't, so EFABC hasn't met, we won't meet until, I guess, next month, July, I reckon. So, and Jason already left, but when Ms. Miller from Kansas Municipal Utilities So, and Jason already left, but when Mrs. Miller from Kansas Municipal Utilities came up and presented, there were some kind of key pieces in there that I wanted to, to touch on. And it sounds like, and we've known this for a long time, and so I think I want to commend David and our directors and staff. I feel like the city of El Dorado actively encourages professional development amongst their employees, and, you know, it's, it's how people like, you know, good, good employees like Jason are able to work their way up in these processes, in these progresses. We also, historically, just in my experience here, the city encourages involvement in professional peer groups like the Kansas Municipal Pool Utilities Group and so forth. You know, some of the things that she talked about just reminded me again that we have some, across the board, throughout, throughout our city staff, we have some extraordinarily capable people. And I guess I just wanted to say, David, I appreciate you kind of fostering that environment for our staff, and, and the directors, and Scott, since you're still, still here, and Mike, and you guys, you know, that's, I know that that's been, sorry, chief, I know that that's been a, it's been a kind of MO for a long, for you guys for a long time, and I appreciate that. That's how we get the best workers that we have, and that's how, you know, I think across the board, our workers are, and our directors and our leaders around here are viewed as subject matter experts and are often leveraged by other communities to help them figure things out. So, I just wanted to kind of commend staff for having that kind of environment. That's all I've got.
One other thing. There was a email that I got from a lady named Mary Gallagher, who was mapped on the net missing meals for Butler County, is gonna be speaking. I wouldn't mind hearing what she has to say, because it's a unique, unique program, and it looks like they're talking about going over to Leon. I'm probably gonna try and get in touch with her and maybe go to that program if anybody else is interested, or if you have a problem with me doing that, please say so.
Learn what you can about it.
Okay.
I appreciate that. City manager's report. Oh, and I'm glad you're alive, you made it out of the pool.
Yeah, 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 I did. So, tomorrow, 1:00 PM, the municipal pool will open. It will be free. Come on down and enjoy the wonderful 81-degree water. It is actually quite nice. So, yes, tomorrow, the first day will be free, and then the regular daily commission will go from $2 to $1 for this year. So, that's kind of our way of saying thank you for being patient, we go through that. Just a bit of a note, the large pool will not be there, we removed that due to some of the safety concerns that we had.
The large pool.
Large slide.
Large slide.
Yes, large slide.
You removed the large pool that fast?
You removed the pool.
That's how we fixed the problem, we discovered it in the pool. The large pool.
We undergrounded it, just.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so, we got the pool. So, that's probably good news. On the good, bad news, assessed valuations are up 9.2%. So, we're going from $97.1 million in the aggregate to $106 million in the aggregate. What this means is that assessed valuation is what the inputs that goes into figuring out what taxes are gonna look like next year. So, we will be having conversations with the commission and the revenue neutral rate and trying to figure out where we're gonna be for next year. Incidentally, the exhibit that I provided you all at the work session on Wednesday, we've made a minor modification to that because I made a mistake. So, that will go out. The exhibit I provided you last week made it look like our taxes would be very low, they went up. They'll still be relatively low, but they'll be higher than they were originally shown. And I thank Butler Community College for pointing that out to me today. So, I'll get that out to you so that we can, you guys can kind of see what the full valuation would look like, so we can, you guys can start using that for decision making. And then finally, starting this Friday and continuing through Saturday, is the citywide garage sale. Well, we have approximately 100 homes on the list. You can go to city hall, actually, and pick up the address list, or you can get it on the city's website, on the Facebook page. I know, Kendra, you won't want to miss all the bargains. So, get out there, get all of the yard sales, try to find something of interest. Finally, I guess, one more thing. I will be out of the office once more from June 24th to July 10th on vacation. So, I won't miss the next meeting, whether it's at 5:30 or 6:30. But, something we hear.
No work sessions?
We do have one, we do have a work session, we have one item that will go over with you next Wednesday.
So, you'll be out of town over the Fourth of July.
Yes.
But just to confirm for everybody, we do have fireworks lined up for.
We do. We have fireworks that will follow the Walnuts game, so come on, come on to the Walnuts. And then after the game, after sunset, we'll have fireworks as well. We have a whole list of activities and events, the usual traditional Fourth of July activities. Folks will be getting a blue paper card in the mail that will have a schedule of all of the July 4th activities. So, be looking for that card stock, blue card stock in the mail, coming to a mailbox near you very soon.
And when do fireworks legally go on sale?
Is that gonna be on that blue card? Not soon enough, Kendra.
Oh.
Or you can fire them off, does that start?
Okay. I mean, I always say tents are going up.
Legal gates to shoot fireworks are allowed on June 27th, July 3rd from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, July 4th from 8:00 AM to midnight, and July 5th from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
That's right.
Do not discharge fireworks on public property without permission, and clean up your debris. Don't put your hot fireworks in a trash truck.
Can I designate the south end of town as?
Fireworks free zone.
Firework free zone.
Your latest motion and a second is in a row.
And we all live on the north end of town, so that's probably gonna be a negative.
All right.
If there's nothing else, I'd consider motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, everybody.